I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. This is our regular meeting. We did have a ordinance workshop prior to this meeting, so we've been here since five. So anxious to get started. At this time, we have with us Reverend Wilbert Harrison. Is he here to lead us in our invocation? All right, if not, then what I'll do is I'll ask Commissioner Legg if he'll lead us in our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you all will, please rise.
Father, we thank you again for this wonderful, wonderful day that we have, not only in Hope Mills, but in the state of North Carolina. We thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. But we're going to ask you tonight to be with us as we make decisions for the town. Bless those who are affected with this pandemic that we have. Make them well, so that they can worship you again. We also ask that you be with each and every person here to get them home safely. We ask that you bless our military personnel, our firemen, and our policemen to keep them safe and bring them all home safe that are gone. We'll never fail to give you the praise. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The first thing that we have this evening is a special presentation. I'm going to ask Tina Yasson if she will come to the podium right there, and she's going to make a presentation from... She is the chairman of our appearance commission, and she has a special presentation this evening.
Like Ms. Mayor, the mayor said I am Tina Yasson. I am the chair for the Hope Mills Commission. We do a yard of the month, and this month for October, the one that was picked was Ms. McDonald. She's at 3706 Brownstone Court. The requirements for this is it has to be done by hand, no maintenance personnel, no professional to come and do it, and it maintained properly and looks nice, and she got the vote. So Ms. McDonald.
Tina, do you want to take pictures for them?
And we actually have redesigned our signs, so they end up like this.
That's pretty.
So no more of a representative of a yard of the month. So this is for October, and yard of the month, like I said, 3706 Brownstone. So if you want to drive by and look at her yard, and let anybody else know, we've got November coming up, so if you have anybody you want to nominate, or if somebody wants to nominate, just go to the town last night.
First is annexation case A 2020-09 GRRF LLC, request annexation of 15.65 acres of land. It's on Muscat Road, pin number 0403-74-4377 part, and 0403-75-4426, known as Sheffield Farms North, section five. This is a non-contiguous annexation, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McDonald.
I don't have a full presentation, but as our town clerk has handled the first two sections of this ordinance, because this is the actual hearing that we're asking you to adopt it, I do have something I want to pass out, which is the memo that we typically give you guys from all the department heads, and they are all recommending approval.
Thank you, sir.
Question for Chancellor.
Chancellor, we have one question for you before we open public hearing.
Yes, sir.
So all the recommendations on this sheet will be addressed that the department's put on here?
Yes.
Public works, stormwater, fire, all those recommendations that were given, they'll be addressed?
Yes, so what we typically do is, even though you guys typically see me when we're doing these annexations, this memo is basically indicating to you that we have had very extensive conversations at plan review, including all these departments. So while we're asking you to consider the annexation, approval or denial, we want to give you some context behind what each department feels. Even though police is not a part of plan review, we still engage them to get their feedback as well, so that at least you'll know which department may have issues, which department may not. But you can make this...make your decision with some context behind it.
Okay. So at this time, do we have anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this annexation? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this annexation? Seeing none and hearing none...
Motion to close.
Have a motion to close the hearing. Do we have any action by the board?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept annexation number A 2020-09 of 15.65 acres of land on Muscat Road.
Second. Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you. Next, we have case P 20-17, revision and amendment to the Hope Mills zoning ordinance by amending Article IV permitted, conditional, and special uses, section 102A-403, use matrix allowing recreation amusement indoor conducted inside building for profit, not otherwise listed and not regulated, as a permitted use within the MP planned industrial district, by inserting a P in the MP column and updating the table of contents as appropriate. And I'll let you explain that.
And you guys, one thing I'd like to explain, this is not a text amendment that we did. This is not a text amendment that the county did. In full disclosure, based on the laws of North Carolina, if a private citizen wants to introduce a text amendment, they can. But before I present the case, I think Mr. Keith, who is the property owner, has been contemplating, if you recall, if you look at the packet, the recommendation from planning board and from my department is denial, but we've talked to him about possibly allowing him to defer the case or change it, or make a decision if he wants us to go ahead and move forward. But I'd like to turn off the floor to him to see if he wants to make a comment.
Alex Keith, 121 South Cool Spring Street, Fayetteville. Yeah, I guess I'm...I do property management. I'm a broker, do mostly real estate appraising and kind of market analysis. And I guess the point of bringing this, just to kind of go over broadly, is that we've seen a high demand for recreational space, and recreational space, something hard to fill, and there's a lot of...I've got about, I think in the...just in the Hope Mills, Cumberland, southern Cumberland County area, there's about 5 million square feet of buildings that are built before 1994. And the reason I ended up taking that parameter to do my analysis on was purely because once an industrial or manufacturing-type facility gets over a certain age, it is very difficult to find a use, and a lot of the buildings that you see like that, some are 100,000, 200,000 square foot buildings that will go almost completely vacant. And I've got, I mean, that's...and that's just what I found on one of the listing websites, and along with...we do a lot of surveys on surveying landlords and seeing how occupied their buildings are. But the big thing is that, I guess, in this...so what I've asked for is a text amendment to allow for the recreational amusement indoor to be permitted. And we would be, I guess I'd be, I think it'd be perfectly reasonable to have a special use permit. I realize now that I have to go all the way back through, is what, or at least is what Chancellor implied. I don't know if that's actually true, or can I now request verbally a special use permit? I guess I'm asking the attorneys as well, and then you guys can vote on that verbal change to this request.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Sure.
We don't have a track record or a paper record if he does a verbal except the tape record.
Well, what he's asking is, I think he's ultimately requesting to amend the request, which I told him he probably has to start that over. What is before you tonight is a text amendment to consider making indoor recreation a permanent use townwide. I'll get into the reasons as to why we're recommending denial, but if he wants to amend this request to make in the matrix so that the indoor use is allowable by special use permit, that is a different text amendment, which means he has to go back. I don't think you guys have the legal authority to amend the request for the text amendment on the floor and actually vote on that, because the actual amendment that's before you is what was filed with the county. So, and I think what he's trying to do is, if he doesn't want to amend it, we can hear the case tonight, but if he does want to make that change, I think he technically has to defer the case, so it gives him the opportunity to go back to the county to amend the request so that he comes back. What is before you this evening is a request to make this a permitted use in industrial zoning throughout the entire town of Hope Mills. But, you know, like I said, if he wants to formally request a deferral to go back to amend it to a special use permit, that's within his rights. But if he wants us to hear the case tonight, then we move forward under the current recommendations.
Are you suggesting it be tabled and give him opportunity?
I don't have the authority to table it. He has, as the applicant, the authority to request a deferral, and that gives him the time to amend the request. But I'm letting him know that, in my opinion, legally, I don't think you guys have the authority to amend a text amendment to change it to a special use permit on the floor. I think he has to go back and amend it with the county.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
My problem is...
Because the public hearing has been advertised as a text amendment to change it as a permitted use.
Yeah.
If we do that, if we change that, then it opens it up for everything in town.
Now, that's based on the merits of if we hear the case. I think what's before us tonight is whether or not he wants it deferred or he wants this to be heard.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Chancellor.
Yes.
Is it an option for him to withdraw this and then come back with a special use permit? Because I think that may be the way to go.
Again, that's his call. My suggestion, the only issue I have with it is it applies townwide.
Yeah.
I think the prudent approach would be to rezone his property so that this change only applies to his lot. But he wants this across the town, so even if you actually amend that request, it's coming through changing the matrix to add indoor recreations and special use permit that would take it to the Board of Adjustment, but it still would be townwide.
How many properties would it affect in our town?
It would affect every industrial piece of property in the town.
How many industrial pieces of property do we have?
We have...we don't have, I would say, we don't have a problem with vacant, vast numbers of vacant industrial pieces. What I will say is, we have a 77-acre new industrial development under construction right now, where the first building pad is four acres in size. We actually just approved a new business in his building about maybe eight months ago. So from my bird's eye view, I don't see us having an issue with vacant industrial buildings that can't be built out. One thing I'd like to point out as well is, industrial uses carry the highest return on tax value. So if this moves forward, what you're opening up is the ability of new industrial developments to be able to get rezoned and built, but it's not industrial use in it, because a recreation facility can come in.
Yeah.
In our...the ideology that applies to industrial uses, they're primarily geared towards uses that don't have direct interaction with the general public, and that indoor recreation is the direct opposite of that. So that's why we're recommending now of the case itself, but we have talked to him about his desire to possibly take a different approach, and it's really his call on whether or not he wants to do it.
What is the...what's the process different than the process of starting over anyways?
If he changed it to special use permit, it would be the same request, it's just the matrix would be changed to allow for this use as a special use permit through the Board of Adjustment as opposed to an outright permit as a permitted use. Again, my suggestion would be something that would only apply to his property, and the only way to do that is through a rezoning, but I don't know if that's his desire to take it out of industrially zoned property.
Yes, sir.
So what you tell...so what I get out of this is, what you're saying is, the correct thing and the right thing to do is deny this request and have him start the process over. Is that what you're saying?
A denial would be an approach that would force him to start over. If he requests a deferral, that gives him the time to make the same request, I'm not sure. It's really up to him. But if we...
But it's the same process, no matter if I defer it or if I get denied. It's the same...
If you come back after special use permit, it is the same process. If you were...
I would like to move forward then.
Okay.
I don't see the denial. I mean, I would believe that you guys deny this doesn't necessarily mean you deny a special use permit. I guess that's the request to change it to just a special use permit.
And there's not any timeframe with him coming back with...
I don't think that a one-year period applies to a text amendment.
Some other things apply.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. But if he wants to hear the case, I'll go and proceed.
I'll let you, I guess if you've got to present.
Yeah.
You start.
I basically given the gist of it, but the background is that staff was recently approached by a citizen who owns industrial property, property is addressed as 4115 Legion Road. He's interested in adding recreational uses to his property. We informed him that those types of uses are primarily allowed in commercial districts as industrial zoning is usually designed for manufacturing and processing industries. As such, many industrial uses are not typically compatible with commercial service or residential uses, because the intent of this district is to permit uses that can be carried out in an unobtrusive manner. With commercial activities not permitted in this district, except those having limited contact with general public, indoor recreation and amusement is not a use that fits within the character and spirit of industrial zoning districts. This text amendment would allow for indoor recreation and industrial zoning throughout the town of Hope Mills and not just on the subject property. However, the citizen has the right to file the request with the county planning department, which is how this case became to fruition. So it's not, like I said, it's not something that we pushed, it's not something the county pushed. This is a citizen asking for a text amendment, and you see the motion from staff recommending denial as recommended by the planning board on September 15th.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion in case P 20-17.
Yeah, open up a public hearing.
You have to have public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. So let's do public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this change? If you'll give your name and address, and then you can address the board.
Alex Keith, 121 South Cool Spring Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Yeah, I guess I pretty much see that y'all are...it looks like y'all might be decided on this. I guess y'all go with...I understand y'all go with city staff, but I guess I'm coming here as...I believe I'm somewhat of an expert, and I've done appraising for about six-plus years now, and I've done economics in college, and I have a good understanding of what drives growth to a city, especially dealing with real estate. And one of the biggest principles that we use in appraising is highest and best use. And when you broaden your ability on a property to open up to different avenues, and I guess I bring this just as one, as kind of just a principled thing of just one use that we've had a lot of...as a broker, we've had a lot of people come to us wanting to use our building and other buildings around town as recreational, and the problem is, they can't find it because either, one, it's in MP zoning, because if we downzone to commercial, our problem is, then if there's some warehouse use where they do some kind of soldering or welding or something, it turns into kind of a manufacturing, and then we would not be able to allow those uses. So what this allows is a more broad, broad ability to use an industrial-style building. But as you guys have probably seen, a lot of older industrial buildings have kind of slowly started being converted to more commercial, and I know Chancellor implied that the tax income for industrial is higher, and that may be for all the industrial, but there's millions of square feet. What that isn't explaining is that on a per-square-foot basis, industrial's probably one of the lowest. I think, I imagine y'all's tax assessments are probably like, probably $10 to $20 a square foot on a lot of...on the larger industrial, I know that's the case, because I've done a lot of tax deals, but I think it's $10 to $20 per square foot. And if you look at like retail buildings, they're at $100-plus dollars a square foot. And so it's just the amount, the mass amount of square footage. So that, I was just going over that, that tax income, if you allow for a more broad amount of uses, you would actually get more income from an industrial property like this, or like the one I manage, which is the Elk Yarn Building up on Legion Road. But yeah, I guess that's a big point, that, one, it will likely bring in more tax revenue, because those facilities, if they're able to be utilized in just one or two more different ways, then they're able to lease them out, and they're able to get more income, and they're able to sell them for more. If they sell them for more, the tax value gets up, and then you get more tax revenue. But then, because I guess the biggest thing, though, is that, like for recreational use, it is a...it's tough to get recreational, to keep a recreational business, either start one or get one going, because the buildings that you have to build for recreational uses are quite expensive with the way...but they're over $100 a square foot. But these old industrial buildings, we bought, my father and his partners, they bought the old Elk Yarn Building for like $8 a square foot. And there's...I can show you many comps of large industrial buildings that go for, I mean, because after NAFTA, honestly, because after a lot of it, we lost a lot of industrial. And the problem is, yeah, we're getting new industrial type of tenants and industrial things coming in, but they can't use these old buildings. And maybe more or less, I'll set this up for kind of a special-use purpose argument, and which I guess I'll be coming back to you for that most likely, if you guys deny this, but that's kind of the idea, is that you'll kind of have an opening for those businesses to come in, because I think, I know, because I know Dirtbag, they looked at using our building, but they couldn't, because it wasn't zoned the right way. But they would have probably been in there two years before their building got built, and they wouldn't have had to build a large building and spend all that money on that. And that's, I understand that partially is great for you guys, but they're tucked away in the, in kind of an industrial area, when I'm sure y'all would probably prefer them being on a main drag, and that's the thing. Now, some of these old industrial buildings are on main drags, when they were used to be, used to be the industrial building, and they're industrial areas, and then, well, actually, in reality, we used to have more of a mixed-use areas, where it used to be industrial building by residential by commercial, and we've gone away from that with...and there's a bunch of arguments on the way, the way American, America has done zoning in the last 50 to 100 years. But the main, the main point is that we've sprawled out our zoning and done single-family over here, commercial here, and that makes it good if you have a car and you can get around, but if you can't, it's not as, not as util...not as high of utility, I guess, for you. But, so my main, yeah, my main points are that, one, this would allow recreational uses, which is, I think, great for a society, great for a society, a community. I know some of the recreational uses we had were like batting cages, paintball, indoor soccer, indoor fitness gym, basketball. Those kind of things could thrive in older buildings like, like our building, which I know is only one, but also there's a...there was, when I did this study back, well, it was March, was how long, is how long it took me to get here. That's why I just want to go ahead and do this case at this point, honestly. But is the 3910 Ellison Street, which had 30,000 square feet available and empty? And then our building still has approximately 45,000 square feet empty, which is the old Elk Yarn Building. Then 2429 Hope Mills Road has, was 100% vacant for about six months to a year. And then a couple of large distribution warehouses on Tom Starling and Technology Drive, they had over 200,000 square feet available, and they were not being utilized, and they, and they, I don't know if, because the thing is, they may be, that building may be occupied, but I doubt the whole thing, because it is, there's just not enough demand out there for older industrial buildings, and that's, that's a good chunk of industrial buildings in this area, just because development of, I mean, industrial buildings is expensive. It's, it's $90 a square foot now with all the, all the building costs and the way, the way it's run. But I guess, yeah, I'd like you guys to kind of at least give this some thought, and I guess the biggest thing that this really allows for is, at some point, these types of buildings, we will zone them to commercial. But what, what opening up those uses for in the matrix, that allows for those buildings to slowly, slowly move from industrial to commercial and not have to do a big shift and take a lot of risk. And that's where we're at. We're at, we're at that point where we're going to, I mean, if we transfer to commercial, we're going to have to kick out two of our tenants completely, and then we're kind of in a, in a limbo, and we've got to fill it with commercial, with commercial-type uses, and that's a lot tougher. But I guess, yeah, that's my, so my text amendment, change the matrix, but recreational use as permitted, I'd like to have a lot more uses, seeing more broad uses, or if I could push the board to, I guess, push the planning board that will be in charge, and Chancellor, which I've, I think I've talked to you about that, I've probably been talking to you about that for a couple of years, is, is having a mixed industrial zone, that there would be another, another zoning that would allow for manufacturing plus some of these uses, and there would be a mix of zoning, which I think, and that's the thing, I guess, I would push that more, but I guess my thought is that, right now, is pretty, it's pretty restrictive and pretty tight window inside of each zoning class. So I think broadening it would is the better way to go, because, I mean, and you got to think, I don't know when, when did, when did Hope Mills start zoning? I know Fayetteville didn't start till 1968. I don't know how, yeah, and I mean, that's, but, but I guess, this isn't, this, the way the matrix has been and restrictive and all, has not been there forever in it, and it's got, I mean, it's got great thoughts to it, and it was put together by very smart people, but there's, there's ways to move and grow in those things. So I guess I, that's my request, and that's all I have to say.
Okay.
All right. Thank y'all.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this proposal?
Motion to close public hearing.
Have a motion to close public hearing. Any questions or any comments anyone have on the board as far as...
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll address him if I may. I've been here on this board about 18 years, and we had zoning ordinance when I came on the board, so I can't answer your question in its entirety, but I can tell you that it's been there 18 years, at least.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, I appreciate your thought, and I appreciate your effort and your research that you, let me take this off, I'm going to talk to you, that you put into this, without any question. I mean, there's a lot of research that you put into it. It's just, my thought is, instead of looking at a broad brush at one time, special use, and we'll... and, and we'll see how this goes, I think that's just the way to go with this. That's just my thought now, and that's why I'm sharing it with you. But, uh, and with that said, Madam Mayor, if no one else has a comment, I'll make the motion.
Madam Mayor, I, I'd like to just make the same comment that Commissioner Bill Flowers said, I would, individually, I would make it a special use, but what I think I hear you're saying is that some of the ordinance, the zoning stuff needs to be updated, and it needs to be, we need to look, and, and, I'm sorry, Chance, Mr. McLaughlin, but I don't know if that's something that, is this like a, a, a issue, like, is this something that we need to look at? Okay, okay.
Oh, shut up. And I guess my only, my only thought was, if these old buildings, if there was any way of, of separating it out, you know, because it, it appears what's happening is the old buildings that are serving no purpose, uh, and, and you've seen it happening in other areas, they're just tearing them down. Uh, I know up in Massey Hill, you know, all the build, all the mills up there now have just been leveled, because there was nothing they could do with them. So, um, if the buildings are still usable, uh, but of no practical purpose for a new industry, um, that's my only thought is, uh, if, if you've got a big box sitting there that, you know, you could do something with.
And, and that's why I said, typically, when I'm coming in with a text amendment, it's something that, it's a trend that I've noticed with several properties. Um, just from my bird's-eye view, we're, we're not dealing with a problem with industrial zoning in, uh, this town. We are actually doing the study with NC Commerce, FCEDC, to try to attract more industrial development, because it's a job creator. Um, if you're talking about the Tom Sterling piece, that's not in our jurisdiction, so that wouldn't apply to us. These issues appear to be issues that are unique to this particular property. So the, the suggestion that I have and the county staff has, is tech, technically to rezone the property. I get what his resistance is from that standpoint, but that's our only avenue of keeping this confined to just this particular property in itself. Um, and that's what le, leads to, um, our current recommendation.
Okay.
You can make a motion.
I will.
Okay.
No one else has a comment? Okay.
That's it.
All right. In case, uh, P twenty dash seventeen, the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners recommends denial of the proposed text amendment to the Hope Mills zoning ordinance and fine. This text amendment is not consistent with the adopted twenty-thirty growth vision plan two thousand nine. Policy Area One, a more diversified local economy recommendation of local governments being active participants, facilitators of industrial development opportunities. Policy Area One also recommends the appropriate opportunity sites for manufacturing and new technology enterprises shall be protected through appropriate zoning. Denial of this text amendment is also reasonable and in the public interest, as approval would allow a use that has impacts most similar to commercial uses, and if allowed to be developed in the industrial zones, buildings would lessen the amount of good vacant industrial land that could be utilized by industry. Indoor recreation is also not consistent with the definition of MP planned industrial districts in the Hope Mills zoning ordinance. Thank you, Mayor.
Have a motion, have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that with this thought. There's probably nobody in this room anymore for recreation than I am, but if we open a door that far, somebody's gonna stick their foot in it and take bigger advantage of us, and I appreciate what you're trying to do. So with that being said, I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir.
Policy is up two months.
Okay.
Come back.
All right, next we have case P twenty dash forty-five, rezoning of point five oh plus or minus acres from R six residential to CP planned commercials CZ conditional zoning for all allowed CP uses or to a more restrictive zoning district located the south side of North Carolina fifty-nine North Main Street, north of the intersection of Bullard Street and Hill Street, submitted by Echo Advantage Termite and Pest Solutions owner and George M. Rose agent, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As stated earlier, this is case P twenty dash forty-five, it's a conditional zoning request to rezone from R six to CP dash CZ. And I try to keep this, uh, pretty brief. Uh, the property exists, there's two. Um, the property, um, is a, is addressed as, it's two vacant, underdressed parcels that front approximately one hundred fifteen point fifty-four feet along North Main Street and eighty-five point twenty-three feet along Bullard Street. Uh, the makeup of the immediate surrounding area varies as the parcel to the north is zoned under the ONIP Office Institution District, with the lot to the south zoned under the C one P Commercial District. The site is located along an established commercial corridor with the overall area comprised of residential and non-residential uses, including office, restaurants, medical facilities, convenience stores, and barber shops. Um, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property, um, to planned commercial slash conditional zoning for the construction of a commercial building that will house three separate non-residential uses. As the applicant is also proposing smaller side yard setbacks, reduced parking, and to not be required to provide cross lateral access, all due to existing lot conditions. The cross lateral access piece, if you recall, that was tied to a trend where I was trying to combat negative impacts of businesses on medians. But if you look at the makeup of this particular area, it slopes downward drastically from this lot towards the Circle K. So with the small size of the lot, if we were to enforce cross lateral access, it would be, uh, access to the adjacent property so steep that it probably wouldn't ever be safe at all. Um, so that's one of the conditions he's putting in here to not actually have to be, be required to do that. Um, in terms of this proposal, all uses under the CP district will be permitted with sidewalks required along North Main and Bullard Street. In terms of the specific conditions, these are tied to the conditions that the applicant put in the application. The building is thirty-seven hundred and fifty square feet, the setbacks for front will be eighty-six feet, side will be ten, rear sixty-five. He's proposing nineteen parking spaces, and the landscaping will be conditioned to the proposed site plan. Um, this is a makeup of the surrounding zone, and as you can see, this is an established commercial corridor. This property, if you recall, um, a few years ago at our budget retreat, we was flo, we were floating an idea of a demo initiative where we incentivized, um, assisting, um, defunct properties being demolished. This was one of the main pieces. The four properties that Circle K, um, acquired were the remaining ones. So a lot of times when we talk about letting the market come to us, this actually, uh, was developed before we could even get to, uh, implementing the demolition pro, program. This is tied to land uses, as you can see, there's a, a variety of a lot of different uses in the area, um, primarily commercial and institutional. There are some single-family uses scared, scattered out the area with a few offices as well. This is just an aerial photograph, as you can see, the subject property is, um, dashed. This is your access to public water, P W C Water and Sewer is available to the subject property. And this is your Southwest Land Use Plan, um, compatibility as heavy commercial, um, calls for heavy retail uses, service and wholesale establishment, establishments, this request is in compliance with the Southwest Plan. This is your proposed, um, site plan. And these are your photographs. This is a view of the subject property. This is a view along Main Street. This is a view across the street from the subject property. This is a view of the subject property, um, along Main Street, property's on the right-hand side.
That's it.
Um, I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have, and our recommendation from staff and the planning board is for approval of this request. The applicant, uh, or the developer is in the audience, in case you do have any specific questions for him as well.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. McLaughlin?
Madam Mayor, I do.
Okay.
I don't think it's a question, I think it's a, it's, it's a valid point that you, that you touched on. When I first read this, and I looked at, that the, um, the note was not to be required to provide cross lateral access, of course, that, that drove me to drive directly to the lot and find out why, because, I mean, that was our, our practice, you know, in past boards, uh, was to go and look and say, well, why's the developer not, doesn't want to do this? Because it's not here. It wasn't stated in there why. But you're exactly right, Chancer. Once you go to the property and you look at how that development is going to finish up, it's clear to see why the developer didn't want to have lateral access.
Now, one thing that actually adds to that, I talked to, uh, Mr. Legg about this as well, because he wrote, he raised the same question. In most of these scenarios, you don't have double-fronted lots.
Right.
So you have Bullard Street coming along the rear. So any issue with that cross lateral access, you still have two roadways, um, two-way roadways in front and back, so that's one of the reasons why we were comfortable with, uh, honoring this request.
But the one, the one question, well, the one comment I want to make sure of is that there's going to be sidewalks up front, and they'll be connecting, correct?
Yes, that's, that's required by.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was there.
That's correct.
Other than that, well, great presentation.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions?
That sidewalk's front and back, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll open public hearing. So anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Anyone in opposition?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Any other concerns or questions from the board? If not, do we have action to be taken?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and make the motion for case P twenty dash forty-five, rezoning fifty acres from R six residential CP planned commercial, uh, conditional zoning for all allowed CP uses or to a more restrictive zoning district located on the south side of NC fifty-nine North Main Street, north of the intersection of Bullard Street and Hill Street, submitted by Echo Advantage Termite and Pest Solutions owner, George M. Rose agent.
Have a motion, we have a second, have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you. All right, next we have a non-public hearing case number twenty dash one twenty-four, consideration of twenty-three seventy-three Hamilton Street Group Development Review. Hope Mills subdivision ordinance is zoned R six acres point four oh, uh, plus or minus acres located twenty-three seventy-three Hamilton Street, submitted by Sean Harold, developer, and Scott Brown, four D site solutions, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
And I'll repeat that, as stated by Madam Mayor, our, this is case P, uh, case twenty dash one twenty-four, it's a group development review. And, um, as stated earlier as well, subject property is a vacant point four zero acre lot, and it is technically currently addressed in the Cumberland County Jazz system as thirty-nine twenty-seven, thirty-nine twenty-nine, and thirty-nine thirty-one Hamilton Street. The parcel is approximately, has approximately one hundred and thirteen point zero five feet of frontage along the eastern side of Hamilton, and is zoned under the R six single-family residential district. Their residential use is adjacent to the north, south, and rear of the subject property with an existing apartment complex located across the street. Hamilton Street terminates at Cross Street to the north and Bino Street to the south, all of which are Town of Hope Mills maintained streets. The developer, um, is seeking to develop the site with a three-unit group development with driveway access points off of Hamilton Street. Front yard setbacks will be maintained with ten yard setbacks along the side, thirty-foot setbacks in the rear, and four-foot sidewalks along Hamilton. Staff recommendation is for approval. This, uh, you can see the subject property outlined in yellow, this is also in a part of town that we, um, are eager to see some new development in. Um, it's just to the rear of the South Main Apartments off of William Bill Luther Drive. And here is your subject, um, property, this is the site plan for the development. That's it.
Do we have any, uh, questions for Mr. McLaughlin?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Okay, anyone else, questions? Any questions, sir? Molly, you okay? Okay?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could you, could you?
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case number twenty dash one-two-four for the con, consideration of the twenty-three seventy-three Hamilton Street Group Development Review. Hope Mills subdivision ordinance, zone R six, acreage is four tenths of an acre, plus or minus, located at twenty-three seventy-three Hamilton Street, submitted by Sean Harold, developer, and Scott Brown, four D site solutions surveyor.
Okay, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next on our agenda would be public comments, and we do not have any this evening. Consent agenda, if, if there's anything that you would like moved from our consent agenda to new business, uh, or if not, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Uh, we have no old business, new business. Consideration of adoption, Board of Commissioners meeting schedule for this upcoming year, this is behind tab seven. Uh, the first one that, uh, was, was put up, um, there was a change, uh, because Monday, January eighteenth was a holiday, so our meeting will be actually on Tuesday, January the nineteenth, in two thousand twenty-one. Any questions about this, meeting schedule?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-one Board of Commissioners meeting schedule.
Have a motion to approve the meeting schedule, do I have a second?
Second.
Have?
There's two options.
Yes, there's options.
You're asked to choose.
Option A or option B?
Option A is basically, um.
The one that.
Skips holidays, and option B.
I'm sorry.
Reschedules every season.
Okay, so this, the first one that we're looking at is.
Okay, option A skips three meetings that conflict with holidays, and the meeting the night before the municipal election. Option B reschedules each meeting that conflicts with a hol, with a holiday for another day and leaves the night before the election meeting, the meeting in place. So if you go to, if, you've got, if you go to your, go to your last two pages, don't try to look at the calendars, go to your, um, version.
The actual written version, resolution.
Version A and version B of your resolutions. That's probably going to be more helpful.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Melissa, is it possible to use version B and kick out November first?
Use version B.
And kick out November first.
And kick out November first.
I guess that would be version C.
Well, yeah, it says in here you can do any version, you can do a combination of the two versions if you wish. Yes.
I mean, because November first, that's the, uh, meeting before the general.
Election.
And, you know, we could kick that one out and then reschedule the other three, but that's just my thought.
Yeah, this is the one that changes the holiday to the Tuesday.
Yeah.
I always liked the, the anxiety of meeting the day before the election, the night before.
But I couldn't be out there working, I was in here working.
Well, and, you know, and Mayor, and, and also in past years, you know, that July fourth or sixth, or sixth, fifth or sixth meeting, we've always canceled anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've always canceled that one anyway, that week.
Yeah, let's see, um.
So I would include that in my version C.
Signify B.
Okay, so that would be take out Tuesday, July sixth.
Yeah, take out Tuesday, July sixth, take out November first, Monday.
November first, Monday, so that leaves you with changing, so you're really only changing Tuesday, January nineteenth.
Mm-hmm.
due to the holiday. Um, and Monday, August thirtieth, due to the holiday.
Mm-hmm.
So you're only really changing two. I'm sorry, my glasses are falling off.
So the only, you're, the only, you're going to keep this schedule and just change November first, is what he's asking?
We're moving, yeah, we're, we're, you're...
They're moving July sixth and November first.
We're deleting two meetings.
First meeting July, first meeting November.
Which is what this has done. This, this version here, you're, you've moved due to the holiday, January, to January nineteenth. You've mute, moved July sixth due to holiday, but where did you move it to? You haven't moved, huh?
I just deleted it. Oh, let me see.
Which version are you looking at?
I'm looking at the one that's got moved due to, I'm looking, I don't know which one it is. Doesn't say A, B, or C. This one, this one says January nineteenth moved due to holiday, which meant the eighteenth was moved to the nineteenth.
Right.
All right, then Tuesday, July sixth is, was moved due to the holiday.
But we're canceling it. So you're scratching it off.
Okay, which means?
We're not having a meeting that week.
If you go with Commissioner Bellflower's.
If you go with what Commissioner Bellflower is suggesting.
Okay.
Because no meeting because of July fourth that week, at all.
Just hope everybody will stay in town, because you know what happens when you cancel that around the fourth. Everybody, we don't have anybody in the parade. Of course, may not have one. So we're canceling July, we're canceling July sixth.
Right, and we're canceling the November first meeting. Yep. And then we're going with version B. Got it? If that's what the, if we still need to vote.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Whatever happens with this, Miss Starling, you send us a revised version?
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I keep it in my top drawer.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion.
Okay.
To approve option B, but eliminating November the first and Tuesday, July sixth board meetings. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, that's it. I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will sign either one of these. You'll just get us a new one. Okay, next? All righty, next, next we have consideration of authorizing Mayor Warner to enter into a lease for operation concession stand at the town lake. Um, and for our general public's, um, interest in why the mayor signs the lease is because the mayor is authorized agent of the town. In most ti- contracts and most, any kind of lease agreement, the mayor signs. It's just part of the responsibility of the mayor. So I know there's been some concerns about why the mayor is entering into a lease, but it's because I represent town. And I guess that's the best way to explain it.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir?
Yeah.
I had a call about that today. It explained to me why it's that way, so I'm more than happy to make a motion to accept, uh, or to approve that the mayor signed the lease on tab B for tab A.
Well, there's two, yeah, there's two tabs. There's one for the lake contract and then there's one for the concession stand. And I just want to point out that, um, I did, um, negotiate the contracts as I was instructed. Um, the contract with, uh, Big T's concessions, um, for the lake is an increase of sixty-two percent.
Congratulations.
And, um, the mayor has signed the contracts in the past, or the leases, I'm sorry, in the past. She signed the previous ones, so this is not a change. Um, the municipal park lease, the, um, the only change to that is the, the first years, it's an in, it's a forty-five percent increase from one-twenty to a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then the following year, it goes up to sixty-eight percent to two hundred dollars after the splash pad is built. And they just felt more comfortable increasing that after the splash pad, um, which I agreed to. So, um, just wanted to point those issues out, so.
Madam Mayor, if it's appropriate, I'd like to withdraw that motion and make a motion to approve B and C. Can I do that then?
Okay.
I make a motion to approve B and C, allowing the mayor to s- enter into the lease for the concession stands.
Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor?
Madam Mayor, I have a comment though.
Okay.
The only reservation I have about, and this has nothing to do with Big T's at all, now I'm, I'm, nothing, this is just business for me. The only reservations that I had about this was the old contracts were four years, and this is a five-year contract.
They were five years.
Were they? The other ones too?
They were five years.
With the one at the, with the, with the one in, in the park, it increases when a splash pad is put in, but the one at the lake doesn't address Heritage Park. Um, and that was a reservation that I had as well. I, I mean, I, I under- I understand that the, the park and, and the splash pad, I got it. I see that clearly. But we've, but now we've got Heritage Park as well, and that wasn't addressed in the, in the lake contract.
Yeah, I, I, I don't really feel that, I mean, Heritage Park is
Down to the other end of the bridge.
Good ways away from Big T's. Uh, I don't really know that there's a correlation there.
Okay, you don't believe that there, there won't be anybody from Heritage Park that?
I mean, there may be.
That won't visit Big T's.
There may be some traffic, but, I mean, the, I don't know that it's really gonna, the people that are going to the lake,
Mm-hmm.
um, the, the increase in the lake. It, I mean, we've already seen a huge increase in the lake, and that, I mean, I think that's already there. So, I think the people that are going to go to Heritage Park are going to be going to Heritage Park for completely different reasons.
Okay, alright.
That's just my personal opinion. I'm not sure that, you know, the people that go to the lake are going to the lake for different reasons. Um, Heritage Park is a different piece. They're going to be going, um, for, you know, walking. You can't really walk at the lake. You go to fish at the lake, or you go to swim at the lake. Um, Heritage Park is, is a different amenity. It's going to be a different amenity. So I'm not sure that, and, and it's a sixty, you know, a sixty-two percent increase. I'm not sure that we could have really stretched it a whole lot more.
Okay.
Um, I'd
I just, that was
Be willing to go back and
That was just my, my question was, you know, you had one, the splash pad was put in, but Heritage Park wasn't, and I just wanted an explanation.
Right.
That's kind of where I was looking for.
Yeah, right.
Well, they suffered over there for a few years, there was no leak.
Yeah.
And, and
They did.
And stayed faithful to us.
And they, and they stuck it out with, um, you know, um, nothing this past year at the park, um, except for soccer. And they've been open every time there's been a soccer game and really not had a whole lot happening, so.
Madam Mayor, call for the vote.
Okay.
Okay.
But that's my explanation, that's my explanation.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I mean, I just wanted an explanation. That's what I was looking for.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The next item is consideration of adoption of ordinance amendment S twenty twenty dash thirty-five of chapter twenty-six cemeteries. And, any discussion?
This is just some correction, yeah. Is that my correct, Jane's?
Uh, correction and clarify, in terms of, we
That, um, Jane and Dan have
And Don, uh, Mr. Siskel.
And Siskel, yeah, Mr. Siskel.
And with, with the cemetery likewise, um, I usually sign as we sell, um, or as people purchase cemetery plots and then for anything else related to it, so it's just a matter of, uh, consideration of adoption of ordinance amendment.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion to adopt the ordinance amendment for S twenty twenty dash thirty-five of chapter twenty-six for the cemeteries.
Have a motion, do we have a se- have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have consideration of authorizing the town manager to work with PWC in submitting comments from the public hearing at Cross Creek Mall on October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. And to also work with PWC to create a resolution in opposition to town of Fuquay Varina's proposed interbase and transfer requests for submitting to the state.
And this resolution will be brought back to the board for, um, the commissioners to approve at a later date. Um, I believe that we have, um, until, what's the date, Jane? Um, Nov- November?
It's later in November.
Yeah, it's later in November to actually, um, submit comments and, um, issue, um, the resolution to the state. But, um, you know, in discussions with PWC, anything that Fuquay does with this is going to have a long-term effect. Um, so on city Fayetteville, PWC, um, Eastover, Hope Mills, anybody that, you know, gets their, their water from this area. And so I believe that it's vital that we work together, um, to submit comments and to make sure that, um, you know, we, uh, do everything that we can to ensure that everything's being done, um, to make su- to ensure that they're doing everything that they can do before they're allowed to, you know, other options are looked at before they're allowed to do this, so.
This information was kind of twisty in places. You had to read it certainly.
Madam Mayor?
But Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to work with PWC in committing, submitting compact comments for the public hearing at Cross Creek Mall on October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. And to also work with the PWC to create a resolution in opposition of the town of Fuquay Varina's proposed interbase and transfer requests for submitting to the state.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
And Commissioner Edwards, did you have a comment?
No, no, no. No, I was going to make a motion.
Okay, all right. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Uh, any additions to the manager's report?
I just have one.
Okay.
And that is just a, a slight change to, um, the, um, internet exchange. So after, uh, discussion with the police chief, um, we've now decided that we are switching from having the internet exchange from here at the town hall. We are going to move it to the police station in the lobby. So we're, um, I'm going to get together with the chief and we'll create signage and, um, we'll start advertising that. So just a slight change, um, and I think everybody will be a little more comfortable with that.
Okay.
So just, that's it. Thank you.
All righty.
Madam Mayor, I got a couple of questions. Oh, wouldn't be a manager's report unless I had at least one. Yeah, I looked at this, the, uh, the bike path, the multi- multipurpose trail down at, down at the lake. And it's really concerning that we didn't receive any bids at all for that, for that piece. Uh, the, what were the reasons? Do you know, or?
No, no, I have no idea.
Yeah?
No bids were received, so.
Because I, that's, that was an important project, uh, part of the lake project. I think it was what, phase two? I think it was in phase two.
Yeah.
Is there, and I noticed that you were, you said that Public Works has decided to focus on other projects. So I guess my question would be, would this go out to bid again?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, they're not, I mean, they're not canceling it or anything. They're just, for the time being, I think they're just going to focus on some other projects, and then at another time, they'll put it back out for bidding.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just kind of being tabled for the time.
Ah, okay, alright. That, now that, okay, I got that.
I think it's the size of the job.
Yeah, it, it more than likely is.
What's, what's happening right now is small jobs aren't getting
Right.
bids because, um, they can bid, they've got bigger jobs, bigger fish to fry, so
Right.
small jobs are.
Yep, and that very well may be.
My next question, Melissa, you know this one's probably coming. Is there any update on the Par Four project?
No, Chancellor, um, I asked Chancellor that earlier, and there is absolutely nothing happening on that right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
The last question I have is, I, I guess it's just for clarification. Back in May-June, there was a proposal for an additional person for Public Works that, for the budget. Did we ever hire?
Starts in January.
Starts in January, okay.
They'll probably start advertising it, um, November, November, and then maybe interviewing December for them to start January.
Okay, alright.
Yep, I'm going to get pushing for HR to start doing that now, so.
Okay.
We're coming up on November, so.
It's kind of the reason I asked.
Yep.
Okay.
No, I've, I've got several things I want them to get moving on, so trust me.
Well, I, I got a long list right here.
Yeah, I know.
That I'll need.
I know, yeah.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
They definitely, they definitely need, um, need, they've got all they can handle, so they need the help, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Staff comments?
Thank you.
Have anything?
Yeah, yeah.
No, no. All right, official comments? Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Legg. Do you have anything this evening, sir?
I've said a lot tonight. I've almost time to shut up. Anyway, that happens when I get home. Shut up. Uh, it was good to see some people in here tonight for a change. It was really good. I want to thank them all for coming out, and I want to thank the staff, the police department, the fire department, uh, all of our, all of our employees at this time of year, Christmas coming up, and and I just hope this is over with by Christmas so they can go shopping with their children. Um, I had a call today, I talked to Melissa about, while ago, about the sign, the marquee sign at the lake. Um, they don't want to tear the sign down because it's built out of the bricks from the old mill. Uh, they don't have a problem if we make the inside of it electronically, digital. But I told them I would pass that on, that information, and I've done that. So when that time comes, we can ask Bruce and them what to do, how to do it, if we have to do it that way. I want to thank Chancellor, he's not here, but he stood in for me the other day. I had to go to hospital up Charlotte to visit with my nephew-in-law, I'm going to call it that, my niece's husband. Uh, he had some surgery coming up, and some of the family members made a trip up there for that. So, um, other than that, uh, give you update, my daughter's doing much better. Her medication has, has helped her up a lot. My wife's been spending a lot of time on her days off with her, and she even sounds trapper now. That's her talking. She sounds much, much better. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Uh, I want to let the board know, I talked to the mayor a while ago. I don't plan on being here on the meeting of the sixteenth of November. That's vacation. It just happened to fall in the wrong week. So that's all, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Marley?
Oh, I have anything.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
Now, thank you, Mayor. Just like to thank all the folks that came out tonight. And I do want to add a comment to Commissioner Legg on, as I was leaving campus today, coming to the five o'clock meeting, I also received several phone calls about the marquee. And, and I'm just going to share part of the conversation. It was told to me that the plan was
It was told to me that the plan was that a certain group of folks had taken this project on to completely raise the marquee to the ground. Now, I find that kind of
Crazy, because nobody said that.
I, because, and I say this, it's like, I didn't have any knowledge of it, I didn't know about, I don't, and I'm just gonna say I, I don't speak on behalf of the board, there's been no update or any, anything that I have even read or heard
There's been no discussion.
That the marquee was going to be raised to the ground. If I remember correctly, and memory serves me right, is that that marquee has historical value because all the bricks that built that marquee came from the mill, along with the bricks that also lead up to the gazebo. So I don't know where this is generating from, and Commissioner Legg, you probably heard some of the same thing, huh? And I mean, so something, so something is out there, and it needs, it needs to be corrected, and I hope we correct it here tonight before we leave, that that marquee is not going to be raised to the ground.
I, I would like to respond to that, because there was an article written in the newspaper, very good article written in the newspaper, and that article was in reference to our prime movers and the fact that they were trying to do some initiatives and some things for Hope Mills, and one of the things where they thought that the marquee needed to be updated, and updated would mean that, so you can read what's inside it. And I know that we've looked at, and had even gotten an estimate one time for digitizing it.
Right.
So I think that's where we are, but there was nowhere in that article that said anything, it was just, I believe someone decided that that's what was gonna happen, and they said it, and it hit social media, and of course, sometimes things on social media are not true, and this is one of those times where it wasn't true.
No, you're kidding me.
I, I guarantee you that, that the conversation wasn't to tear it down, if anything, and all along, we've looked at preserving it, because if you'll recall, when we did the gazebo, we had it updated, which was just painted and fixed the trim, but the guts of it, where you have the signage part, is the part that needs something done. If it's not, if it's not putting in something digital, it's fixing it or possibly putting another sign down there, because I think that was something that was at our budget retreat, we discussed signage somewhere else in that location, so.
And we have, and, and we have money from the bank, that was donated to us years ago for that.
That wasn't for the sign, that's for landscaping.
Landscaping, okay.
Yeah, strictly landscaping, we didn't, and that's something else too, I know that I've seen, or had someone call me in reference to the money for the landscaping. That money was donated, and the reason we didn't move on it or use it was because at that point in time, that corner was where they were staging the stuff for the dam, and so it wasn't used, it wasn't spent. And then when we had the new dam, that dam failed, and before we could use it, we had, again, more construction. So it's just been kind of on hold until we had thought that when we did phase two of the lake park plan, that it would have been incorporated into that, and when that phase two plan was changed, I think it was just bumped on up to where we got to that stage again.
I think, I think Marco's working on the landscaping plan right now, that I'll be bringing back to y'all for, in front of the, that area, so.
Good, because it's now, now, yeah.
That may be coming soon.
Because now it's stable, I mean, we're at a point now where there's not, there's nothing happening to
Yeah.
damage what was to be there, okay?
Madam Mayor, would it be out of line if I made a motion that we refurbished that sign instead of removing it?
Well, there's no plans to remove it, so I don't think at this point, um.
Yeah, I don't think there's a need for
No, no.
A motion, and any change down there would have to come back to y'all anyway, so. The, the prime movers or any committee has no authority to do anything like that anyway, any change
Has to come back to them.
Would have to come to you all anyway.
Yeah.
Can I, can I say something, because this was about my group, and I understand that some people cause some panic and mass hysteria about something that's not even true, so in the future, if someone calls you all about something like that, and I was here when it was said, please call me to get some clarity, I don't need a history lesson, nobody said it was gonna tear it down to the ground, I think it was a comment about we need to fix that old thing up or something like that, but nobody literally was talking about tearing it from the ground, and of course, they don't have that authority, and I don't have that authority to make that decision in the first thing, in the first place, I think it's people trying to take that committee and tear it down and make it negative before it can even get started. So no, nobody had a discussion about that, but my number is public, so if anybody has a question, I was here, they can give me a call, and I will clarify it for them.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards?
Well, yes, mine's on a good note, I've had people laughing and calling about Keeping Up With The Bones, and so I had to go and look at them, and I got hysterical on a few of them. Whoever came up with the idea needs to be commended.
Megan Hawkins.
Really, Megan Hawkins?
She's bones?
Well, it is, it is fantastic, and everybody just loves it.
Okay.
So we appreciate, we also appreciate everything that Marco and Jamie are doing with the appearance commission, and the things that they're getting ready to do.
Voting started today on Keeping Up With The Boneses, so be sure and vote.
Yeah.
I did today, before the line got long.
They're wrong voting. Mayor, vote here.
Oh, excuse my outbursts, that I had to clarify, but I would also like to say that there will be a group here on Saturday, like party at the polls, music, feeding people as they wait in line, and then on Sunday, I have been invited by a group to do a bus tour, they're gonna start here at Hope Mills, at Hope Mills, and it's like a, just a Sunday, Sunday at the polls, voting at the polls, and it's really to get people out to vote, and I was asked to do it as the first African-American mayor for town, it's encouraging all people to vote, but especially minority groups that have low, usually have low voter turnouts, before somebody takes that and turns it into something else. But that's what that's about, so, we'll be here on Sunday, we'll start here, we're not gonna do anything, and they're gonna go to a couple of places, and it's, again, they're gonna be live, and it's encouraging people to vote, nobody's coming to tear Hope Mills up, so I just want to make that clear before anything gets put out about that, but it really is a move to encourage all people to vote, but especially, I was asked to do it because I am the first here, and it was a encouragement to get people out to vote, so, and I like The Boneses too. So I saw it on my morning walk, and I posted it, and I think it's really cute, so that's all I have.
And the main thing for me is just reminder to go vote, I think we, we need not only to encourage people, but this is a good, perfect time with early voting, I know there's been some long lines, but I also know today, that we're keeping us up to date, where you could go vote, there wasn't a long line, because you can vote anywhere during early voting, and I know today, Massey Hill and Grace Creek, both, they were saying this is a good location to go to. So I think the main thing is take advantage of the early voting while we have it. Appreciate everyone being here this evening, we also appreciate the fact that we've taken care of business, and this is another early night. So with that being said, do we have a motion to?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to be rude, but I'd like to make a motion that we
Okay, thank you, sir, we have a motion to, sure, and we'll see you all, our next meeting is November.
See you next month.
Yeah, November.